Beautiful Westfield evening. I don't know about our plow guys, but I don't ever remember mounting the plow on yellow Jeep this early. But it is mounted, we are ready. So good to have you all here on this Veterans Day, very special day. And I really appreciate the people that participated and our veterans that are here. We'll continue with the meeting, we're honored to have Pastor Steve Pedego of Eagle Creek Christian Church. There he is, Pastor, I thought I saw you walk in. If you would all rise and join Pastor, followed by the... Well, let's start with the-
...intify the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As today we celebrate and honor our veterans, so we pray for our veterans. Let's pray. Almighty God, you are our Creator and Sustainer. You are our light and our fortress. You are our wisdom and our strength. Lord, you moved upon men to establish this great nation. You stirred men to hope and to dream for a land of freedom. We praise you for this great nation. We gather today to remember our military personnel. We acknowledge that their service enables us to walk as free men and women in this great land. And we ask that you abundantly bless those who have previously served. Lord, we stop now and remember those who are currently serving. We ask that you provide them with your protection, your strength, and your peace. We ask that you would abundantly provide for all their needs. We ask that you would enable them to overcome every personal and professional obstacle. We ask that you would protect their families from hurt and harm. May each of our veterans feel honored, not just today, but every day. Father, we also give special recognition to our wounded warriors. We realize that many of our heroes are dealing with physical and emotional wounds that occurred as a result of their time of service to our country. We ask that they be given the best treatments available and that you would add your supernatural blessings to all the efforts given to them to help them. We ask that you, Lord, would show them miracles as they seek to gain health, stability, and wholeness. And so we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Pastor, thank you so much. President Keane, your meeting.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the road to establish a form?
Mark Keane?
Here.
Jim Ake?
Here.
Bob Horkey?
Here.
Steve Hoover?
Here.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Cindy Spalt-Jerick?
Here.
Chuck Lehman?
Here.
We do have a form.
Thank you. There are no changes to note to the agenda, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Jim Ake, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover, any discussion? Singing none, we'll do this by voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If unanimous, move on to claims. Do we have a motion for claims?
Moved to approve claims as stated.
Motion by Jim Ake, is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Joe, all over, any discussion? Any of the items, if not, we'll do this by voice vote, two, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it's also unanimous, we have approved the claims. Onto special recognition, we are going to get an update on Simon Moon expansion. This is a planning document only, there's no action required with this. Chris, give us an update, please.
All right, good evening councilors, mayor, everyone in the audience. My name is Chris Monahan, I'm the park superintendent for the city. I'm bringing before you guys tonight some information on what we've been working on, and this is the reimagining of Simon Moon Park. I assume all of you guys are familiar with where Simon Moon is. If those of you in the audience aren't familiar, it is about a five acre parcel next to City Services Center on 171st Street. One of our duties with the city is enhancing the quality of life, and we have an opportunity placed in front of us and a dream that we've been working on that will do just that, enhance the quality of life of our residents as well as our visitors. Jeremy Lawler kind of said it best when we started down this road. The vision of this site is to turn it from something that is uninhabitable into something beautiful. And for those of you guys who don't know, Simon Moon is abutted not only by our City Services Building, but also by our old wastewater retention lagoons. A little bit of history, the lagoons were constructed in the early seventies. Obviously, back in the thirties, they were a cornfield, just like the rest of the city of Westfield. They were built in the seventies, they served wonderful purpose for a long time. It was '05 or '06 that they were idled when the new wastewater retention building was built out off of the Eagle Creek. And in 2017, we started the clear close of these things. And it was about that same time that we were working on the park's annual five-year master plan. And it was kind of thought, well, what could we do with these things when they were closed? And Jeremy, as he calls it, got an app in drawing, thought, what a wonderful idea to take these lagoons and turn them into an extension of Simon Moon Park. And that's kind of where we are today. The entire site is 38 acres. We're going to look more at 24 acres, which would include the lagoon and about the six acres of the already existing park. The opportunity laid before us is we can preserve green space and add beauty and outdoor recreation opportunities to our residents. We can preserve and conserve habitat for wildlife that, believe it or not, does visit already. From loons all the way to bald eagles, you can see them out at that pond any time of year. And then also, like I said before, offer more opportunities in both active and passive recreation opportunities at the park. Over the last several months, we've developed this plan, we worked with B3, we spent time passing back and forth these pencil drawings and talking a little bit about it. And then we spent half a day with city and staff, some city councilors, both past and incoming. And we put our heads together to come up with this product here, which is a conceptual drawing of what this park could be. Taking the old lagoons and closing them and filling them in a portion of the way to create this roughly eight to nine acre lake. Reorienting the sledding hill, so it would go down to the north as opposed to the south towards the road. Adding parking, over time adding places for outdoor education opportunities where we can partner with the county and their already wonderful outdoor education program they have there, nature education program. These are just some of the conceptual ideas that we'll go through. Obviously, also adding water features, boardwalks, potential canoe launch and kayak launch for the public to come out and enjoy the lake. As well as, obviously, outdoor recreation and educational opportunities. Another shelter, art as function, as you can see in this picture, a potential shelter. And then also, it would be an oasis amongst the Midland Trail. Bringing back away from the residence to the east, the trail that's already there, add more separation between those residents in the park, as well as bringing the trail down into this park. And again, creating an oasis along the Midland Trail for everyone to enjoy. With that said, this is a wonderful opportunity for us, and we've been working quite hard on it. We're going to continue to work on it. Ultimately, what I'm here today to do is to get this added to our already approved 2017 master plan. There's no action needed, we just wanted to make sure that councilors were aware of it and what we were working on. With that said, I can open up the floor for any questions you guys might have.
Councilors, have any questions?
Do we have an initial cost estimate on different phases?
At this point in time, we do not have any solid numbers, we're strictly in the design phase. So at this point in time, we don't. We do have a large master plan document that I'd be happy to share, just reach out to me and I can send you a PDF copy of that.
But we would likely use park impact fees for any development?
I would imagine yes, but we haven't identified a funding source at this point in time.
Other questions?
Sounds like a great plan. As with most things, funding is obviously one of the-
Obviously.
-one of the big issues, but certainly sounds like a wonderful plan, and hopefully we can figure out a way to do it.
Well, thank you for your time, councilors, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris, for your work. Mayor Cook, new officers.
May we administer the local office to a couple of our middle offices? Can you come in? And please, would you bring the baby back in? This is important. I measure the migrancy of the city by two things, the crying of babies and the number of strollers. This is wonderful. So, you know, we normally do this only at the public safety building. We've expanded, fortunately, our public safety, fire and police by beyond where I don't even know anybody's name anymore. It's embarrassing. I hope you do.
I do.
Okay. Like, what better way to do this than let's do the local office right here? You can all see who's going to be pulling you over. Or better yet, who's going to be watching you all? And, you know, the public safety events in the city are next to us. They do not pay, do not want me to even talk about the crime of the city, or the total lack thereof, or the lack of major fires, etc. I can't talk about that because these guys get all freaked out. But we enjoy a level of public safety prevention that I would only unparalleled in any city across the United States. I'm very proud of that. And it's all due to these men and women of our police and fire and security. So, Dad, two more, is a bill. My honor, administer the new law. So if you would, we have Derek Aldrich. And we have, will you show me? First of all, tell us a little bit about you, where you're from, what you went to school.
I'm from Laguardia County, Indiana, way up north. I come here from the El Park Police Department. I've total about nine years of full-time police experience coming here. Went to college at IPW in Fort Wayne, studied criminal justice there. Married to my wife Elizabeth, have two kids, and years back.
What's your name?
Daniel, this is a five-year-old boy, and Daphne, one-year-old girl.
My name is William Shereef, I'm from Lakeview. I came to IPW for school and the Juvenile Use Program. And I just graduated of the academy back in college, so this is my first street police job, and I'm really excited to work in it.
So, if you two would repeat after me? I?
I, dear Judge Shereef.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, uphold, and defend-
Do solemnly swear that I will support, uphold, and defend-
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And then I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially-
And I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially-
Execute, execute the duties assigned to me.
Execute the duties assigned to me.
As a law enforcement officer of the city of Westfield, Indiana.
As a law enforcement officer of the city of Westfield, Indiana.
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
And always in accordance with existing law-
And always in accordance with existing law.
And Department General Orders-
And Department General Orders.
So help me God, so help me God. Gentlemen, you are now ready to cast your-
And I think, based upon the budget adoption, you'll be doing that a few times in the upcoming 2020 year.
We are, and we will do it right here, or right here.
Doesn't matter to me. Undulled business, first item of business, ordinance 19-39 Rights Property Group at Grand Park PUD, Pam.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your consideration, I have a proposed new PUD district to be known as Rights Property Group at Grand Park PUD to accommodate a commercial recreational facility. This four acre site is located on the north side of 186th Street, west of Grand Park Boulevard, and is immediately east of the existing Pacers Athletic Center. It is currently zoned AGSF1. The proposed PUD accommodates the use and also includes standards to accommodate site design and architecture as shown on the concept plan and character exhibits. This petition did receive a public hearing at the September 3rd Plan Commission Meeting and comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the October 7th Plan Commission Meeting. The recommendation did include a condition that the first three to four feet of the building facade be replaced, the EFS be replaced with masonry materials. I do have the petitioner's representative, Eric Dowfitt, here to provide a brief presentation and explanation of the change, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Members of the council, Eric Dowfitt, partner with Church Church in Alantrum, 116th, 116th, North Union here in Westfield. In the proposed PUD that you have in front of you is the amendment that Pam specifically referenced in Section 7.2B. And through a scripter's error of mine, we wrote five feet instead of the three to four feet with regards to that masonry and would request that that be amended back to the three to four feet requested. You'll see it be right there where Pam was at. We have agreed to the masonry material, and otherwise, this is consistent with what's passed by APC. I'm available with any additional questions, but would request, for any additional questions, but would request that 7.2 be amended to the first three to four feet instead of five feet as presently stated in the document that you have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let's have a motion on ordinance 19-39, and if we want to amend the ordinance after that, we can do that. If it receives favorable vote, favorable votes, I guess, ordinance 19-39, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 13-39 Rights Property Group at Grand Park PUD with the stipulation that the five-foot masonry requirement be altered to three to four feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Now discussion.
I have a question for the petitioner.
Yes.
Let's see, in, in, under Section 7, 7.1, talks about screening and receptacles, particularly as it pertains to trash receptacles, which would be permitted in the established front yard. I don't see anything in the exhibit to indicate where those might be nor what they would look like.
It would be in this area right here.
Okay, I was wondering if-
That's the location of it right there. And the reason is, in the backyard, that's not going to be developed initially. That's going to be reserved for something, and there's not going to be any other way to get around it. It will be screened, consistent with what's required under our present PUD or under present UDO. And you'll know that it has to be at least 250 feet away from 186th Street. So it's going to be next to the building, hidden in the, as much as we can in that particular location at this point, and appropriately screened.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You have a provision in here that you allow for outdoor storage and display, but it's for things like athletic equipment, tennis courts. And this is for the front yard, in the established front yard. Can you explain to me how that works?
In the event that we were to have a temporary event or something like that, because we are a gym, then we've reserved right to do that, there is no intention to do a tennis court at this particular time. So I think that we could strike that if that's something that is of concern. Also, this is going to have a gym component to it, so to the extent that we were to put against the building or some other kind of gym paraphernalia from outside for the people who are participating in that is the other idea. Again, we're not developing the back at this point, so that's the expectation.
My concern is that it doesn't seem like that was planned nor the intent. Things were to be indoor, except for maybe something in the rear, which wasn't well-defined yet. And with all the parking and activity out front, vehicular traffic, I don't see how outdoor storage and display is a good idea. In that location, concerning that you want to have kids out there.
If it's helpful, we'd be happy to delete that Section E within the ordinance, if that's helpful to you, and take that off the table, because it would be a temporary use, not a use that's significant to what we're doing anyways. We'd be happy to amend the PUD to delete that section as well.
I think you'd still be able to apply for a special event permit and be able to do stuff like that. I'd feel a bit better about it.
Understood, we're happy to delete that.
Thank you. Another question I had, this exempts you from doing the landscaping to the north until after Phase Two is completed.
Correct.
What happens if Phase Two doesn't happen, or it's 20 years from now? We have a situation where we have a, I would say it's a not very good-looking elevation that's been facing our grand park.
That would be a possibility under the ordinance as written, that's correct.
In some earlier discussions with the petitioner, there was some talk of having some playground equipment in the front at the east side of the building. And by striking E, that would not be possible, I don't believe. Is that, the petitioner is okay with that?
The petitioner's okay with that, yep.
Okay.
Cindy, do you have other questions?
Those are the two big ones for me right now.
Okay, let me address one at a time here. Item E, Steve, are you okay with deleting that as part of your motion?
Yes.
Bob, are you okay with that, as deleting that as part of your second?
Yes, I am.
All right, then let's move on to the second concern. Cindy, would, would there be any, or may I ask you, any consideration for saying, within five years, if there's not been expansion, that then you have to do the landscaping? So at least there's some kind of closure on that particular item?
We would, yes, we would be happy to commit that if we don't, have not... So let me back up, there's an option with someone else to purchase that, so it may be not be us who develops it. So I'd want to think through with language, with staff, exactly how we'd want that to look as the key to that. Whether it be a transfer to somebody else or something, but coming up with the five-year sunset on that landscaping, that if something hasn't happened, is something they'd be willing to commit to. Perhaps something to the extent if the, if there has not been a new motion for a new use, or for- We'll be fine with that, so.
So I just pulled five years out of the year.
Five years should be fine, consistent with how that's developing and what we anticipate to happen there. I think five years should be plenty of time for that to develop. So I think our clients would be happy with that. If we need to come back and amend based where we are, that's an obligation we've taken upon ourselves to have to amend and ask for an extension if it gets to that point. And council will be able to reject it if that's the case.
Cindy, does that sound somewhat reasonable with your standpoint?
It's kind of reasonable, right now, you know, without the landscaping and with the elevations, it doesn't meet our ordinance that I'm aware of. I mean, I think that a facade that long would have to be broken up, and this is not broken up at all, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments, Chuck, you?
I was not aware that there would be a division of this parcel.
There is not a division of this parcel. We're just not going to be developing the north portion of this parcel. It's going to have to be replatted when we come back. In the event that we construct on it, then there won't have to be a division of the parcel. It would only be if someone who had an option exercised that option, we'd have to come back to the secondary plating process and replat it.
What's the total parking count? I've not seen that.
The total park- There are 174 parking spots on the front, which overparks for our use by approximately 80 to 100 parks based on our max use. We've entered into a cross-parking agreement with the PAC to the West to allow them to use this as overflow parking, as we're coming from, when they have events, that would help alleviate some of the parking concerns that are happening there. And we've entered into that cross-access and cross-parking agreement to permit them to park in our facility.
Yeah, as part of our discussions, we've been concerned about the parking. So obviously, the elimination of any activity out front's critical, I think. And also what it might be used for, or what that expansion might entail.
That's exactly right.
Because that's a component of why we're even considering this.
That's exactly right, and that's why we've overparked it by so much, is to allow that expansion to the north to take place and have appropriate parking for it at that time.
But it's only overparked by your estimated numbers of usage and the type of activity that's in that building, though.
That's correct.
I mean, next door looks overparked as well, but it isn't.
That's, there are events where there's significantly underparked, that's correct.
Yeah, that's, it's just our concern here, is that it's a big parcel. As the building is intended, is designed today, in a way as it was explained to us, the usage will be intermittent all day, et cetera.
That's correct.
But this parking is, could be sparse.
And again, we believe that it's significantly overparked for this particular use, because there aren't going to be big events or tournaments that are held at this particular location on a regular basis, unlike PAC to the West. It also complements PAC's use with regards to, when PAC is busy, we tend to be less busy. When we tend to be busy, PAC is less busy. And that cross-parking does go both ways. So as long as we're able to coordinate with PAC, there should not be any significant parking issues. That's not good for our business, their business, or the citizens of Westfield, we acknowledge that.
I guess this is a question for staff, how much could that building be enlarged with, just, just by their choice?
It could, let's see, let me pull this up. So they have listed square footage for their future addition, so it could be enlarged by up to that amount of square footage.
Nearly double.
Yes, and still be in line with the ordinance.
Just wanted to bring that out.
Are there other questions?
I would, I would further amend my motion to add the landscape on the north with the five-year requirement, as discussed.
I agree as well.
Okay, so what we'll be voting on is ordinance 19-39 with the deletion of Section E and a stipulation on language to be developed that will require landscaping to be completed at a five-year point in time if no further development takes place. But you also have some language in case there's a PUD change or this land is sold or developed by someone else, so that'll all be in there, is that correct, Eric?
Correct, the specific discussion between Brian and I, Mr. Zager and I, was five years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy we would have to put in the landscaping. At that point, it would sunset, we would have to come back. At that point, it would sunset, we would have to come back and get an amendment or an extension if the landscaping wasn't properly installed within five years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Kim, you have that?
And also the five-foot requirement for me to change to three to four feet was the other part.
Okay, with the amendments and changes, clerk, please call the roll.
Cindy Spoljeric?
No.
Chuck Lehman?
No.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
No.
Mark King?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to three.
On to ordinance 19-47, Darktown Crossing, PUD Amendment One. Al Hurt. No, I'm sorry. Jonathan.
Some people don't know who you are.
You're probably right.
I'm afraid I'm too young for that reference. Good evening, council, for the record, I'm Jonathan Dorsey with the Community Development Department. For your adoption consideration this evening, it's the Darktown Crossing PUD Amendment One. This project is located north of State Road 32 and west of Darktown Road. This project intends to modify the current Darktown Crossing Plan Unit development to add an additional nine acres for commercial and retail use. That makes the site approximately 45 acres in total size. This project is also intends to permit the use of a kennel on the site, modify a number of architectural standards, landscaping standards, and signage standards. Since its public hearing at the October 7th Plan Commission meeting, the petitioner has modified the architecture for proposed kennel. This change has been reflected in the building comparison exhibit, which has been provided to you in the agenda. This item is coming before you with a favorable recommendation of seven to zero. The petitioner and the representative are here this evening. They do not plan on making a presentation, but staff and then plan to answer any questions should there be any. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on ordinance 19-47? Move to approve ordinance 19-47, the Darktown Crossing, PUD Amendment One. Motion by Bob Horkay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Steve Hoover. Discussion. Questions?
This is going to be in Area Three, am I correct? If you can pull up, Area Three, yeah, there it is. And there was a, in the wordage, the overlay doesn't go out that far, the 32 overlay, maybe I'm mistaken about that, but there's a explanation of a trail overlay on 32. What is the difference between a trail overlay and a highway overlay?
The State Road 32 overlay standards apply to the entire site.
Okay, so there is no difference really there?
It is not. If the word "trail" is implemented somewhere in there, we can track it down with staff and delete that, but there should be no, there's no secondary reference if it applies to the State Road 32 overlay standards, refers to that, it applies to the entire site.
But I noticed in this, the kennels were, I guess, forbidden in that 32 overlay, and this is an exception. And I, I don't have bad problems with it, but I just want to understand what's going on and how it works. And there was some concern about barking dogs, I guess, but-
And we had a neighborhood meeting that was conducted in advance of the Plan Commission meeting. The owners of the real estate immediately adjacent to our west attended that neighborhood meeting, and we spent about an hour. There were five or six representatives. The franchisee of the kennel was there, addressed their questions, and they did not submit any additional comments to the Plan Commission after we provided that explanation. The kennel would only be permitted in Area Three, and that wouldn't be allowing it along State Road 32 frontage. There were architectural concerns which were addressed at the Plan Commission stage.
That's all. Are there other questions?
My biggest concern with this, I think the location is good from a use standpoint. It's off 32, it's surrounded by other business and industrial uses. The biggest concern that I had was the architecture, and as introduced, this did not meet the 32 overlay, in my opinion. With the changes that were made, there were significant changes made in materials and bumpouts and roof lines to what I believe does meet the 32 overlay, and that's the reason that I support this.
Other comments, questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljeric?
Yes.
Mark King?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. On to ordinance 19-49, the Grand Park Village, PUD Amendment Three. Corey?
Good evening, council. For the record, I am Corey Harris of the Community Development Department. Decided to propose amendment to the Grand Park Village PUD District on property located at the northeast corner of 181st Street and Wheeler Road, and approximately one acre. The amendment proposes to modify Article Four of the Grand Park Village PUD to permit outdoor runs, including play areas, on an already permitted uses of veterinarian clinics, kennels, and boarding facilities on Lot One. This item has received its public hearing at the October 7th Plan Commission meeting, and received a unanimous favorable recommendation at the November 6th Plan Commission meeting. This item has received no public comment and is eligible for your adoption consideration. Jason Sanderson is here tonight, representing the petitioner, and does not plan on making a presentation. He is available for questions, and I am available for questions for staff.
Thank you, Corey. Do we have a motion on ordinance 19-49?
Some.
Moved by Cindy Spoljeric, is there a second?
Second.
Looked up by Jim Ake. Questions, discussion?
One question, I don't know if it's a big thing or not, but where's the entrance and egress on this project? Is it on 181st Street, or is it on-
Yes, it's on 181st Street.
That's not shown on the drawing at all.
No, it is not. It is part of the DDP, and it has already been approved at the APC meeting.
Yeah, this ordinance is to amend the use. The development plan has gone through the Plan Commission process.
Other questions, comments?
I just would note that I think the reason the use itself, I believe, was okay, the outdoor runs specifically were the issue, and those are only part-time, they're always manned, in other words, there's someone out with the dog, so it's not a long-term thing. They will not be out there at night, is my understanding. So this was strictly for that particular part of the use.
I believe, by recollection, the residents are only outside if they're in the facility for medical, anyway, this is not a boarding facility, this is where you have a medical holding-
Correct. Yeah, it'd be like a daycare, or anybody, or any animal that is receiving veterinary services.
Seeing no other questions, clerk, please call the roll.
Mark King?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljeric?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. On to ordinance 19-51, the Chatham Hills, PUD Amendment Seven. Pam?
Thank you again, Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your consideration, we have the Seventh Amendment to the Chatham Hills PUD District that would incorporate an additional 250 acres. This property is located at the southwest corner of US 31 and 203rd Street, and is currently zoned a mix of AGSF One, general business, general business plan development, and the Chatham Commons PUD District. The ordinance proposes a mixed-use development with underlying zoning districts of SF Four Single Family, General Business, and General Office. The ordinance outlines several development standards, and also includes character exhibits to guide the development of the real estate. The public hearing for this petition was held at the October 7th Plan Commission meeting, and the item received a favorable recommendation with conditions from the November 6th Plan Commission meeting. The conditions included requiring a 50-foot buffer along the Bukilabend properties, additional height restrictions along the Bukilabend properties, which were outlined at the meeting as well as in emails earlier that day, and also incorporating an exhibit that depicted both of these requirements. The petitioner, Steve Hankey, is here. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I of the department. Thank you.
Pam, I may have missed it, but what was the, it was a favorable vote, what was it?
It was unanimous of the members present.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, I'm sorry. We needed a motion on ordinance 19-51. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 19-51.
Motion by Chuck Lehman, do I have a second? Second by Steve Hoover. Now, questions, comments, discussion?
I have some.
All right.
I had requested, when I first heard about this project, for extra attention to be paid for a golf cart crossing, or something to that effect, from the clubhouse area across Tomlinson, and I don't see anything in the PUD addressing that.
Steve Hankey, 3524 Club of States Drive, President of Hankey Development. Yeah, we would like to do that, and it's one of the things that we're considering doing that, connecting it to, we have not committed to do that, but we are looking into doing something very similar to what we've done crossing 203rd Street this time. So, again, that decision has not been finally determined.
That is a big concern for me, because obviously you're going to have up to, it looks like up to 900 potential units on this parcel that are going to want to access that clubhouse. So that's a major concern for me. A few other things. The language on the decibel level, I'm not quite sure why you're wanting to exempt yourself from any standard that we might impose. And you have, it's up to, I think, six feet off the property line at 90 decibels.
I think what we were doing there was, that's only in the village area, where we'd have a mini amphitheater, and that's where we were exempting ourselves from that.
Okay, but you're potentially going to have residential in that area as well?
Yes.
Okay. We've been studying our noise ordinance a bit, and 90 decibels is really loud. And so to say that you could have that potentially, especially when you have small setbacks and residential there, that concerns me, because we don't know how that's going to fly. And with the way it's written, it's not restricted either to any certain times or activities. So again, you know, a business could potentially locate there and continually put out 90 decibels.
No, we would certainly restrict that. I thought it had been restricted, we would restrict that to 10 o'clock.
Okay, that's not in there right now, so.
Okay.
The outlot signage, you know, we get a lot of requests, and it's becoming troublesome for me to increase the signage allowed. And a lot of times, it's, the request is two feet for every one foot facing a public right-of-way. And again, you're asking for two. And when I go through the character exhibits and the imagery, if you look at what you included in there for your theming, you will see there's not big signage like that. You just don't see the signage. So that is still a concern for me.
What we've done there is, we have that, the two for the flexibility of it. We do envision more the gooseneck-type lighting, we envision more of the standards of signage like I used at Bridgewater in the center on Gray Road, fits into the architecture of what we are trying to do. But basically, we want to keep that flexibility. We're not, I think you know from our developments, we're not going to over-signage anything like that that would throw the ambiance or the look, et cetera, off.
Well, as you know, Steve, and I'll just be completely honest, you have a great track record, but this goes with the land.
I understand.
And God forbid anything happened to you, this gets carried with the land to any other owner. So a lot of my concerns are more to that kind of thing, because I have about 10 others I'm concerned about, and it's not related to you, because I know you do a good job, and you're going to protect your investments. It's if someone else came in later on, and what they could do. Just wanted you to know that.
Okay.
Eva, one question about, I got an email the last day or two about buildings adjacent to the Bukilabend property, that there's another crosswinds, common development, the buildings adjacent to that shall be limited to two stories. What about the buildings adjacent to Bukilabend?
That's a great question, thanks, thanks, Joe. We've met extensively with the Bukilabend residents and their representatives, and that's what we all resolved before the Plan Commission meeting. We resolved that, first of all, we walked the site with the Bukilabend, some of the representatives, and increased the tree preservation to everything that is along their line. It's ranging from 30 feet in the northern area to 45 feet in the southern area. So we did that. We then also agreed to increase the building setback from what would have normally been near 20 feet to 50 feet all the way down through there. We further agreed to limit any building or portion of a building within 100 feet of the property line to two-story. So, yeah, we agree with all that.
Do we have any questions? Jeff?
Go ahead.
While I agree with many of Cindy's concerns in a normal development, I think the reason that I am not so concerned in this one is because this commercial area is internal to your, to the development. There's no existing residential around it, and anybody that builds or moves in there is going to be very familiar, or should be, with what could go into that commercial area. If that were already developed around there, or we had thoroughfares going through there, I would have some of those same concerns. But just so that, just wanted to be clear why those are not major concerns for me, where they might, in a normal development, might be.
Steve, with consideration to, I mean, I'm sure this is going to be a big success. As we look at the division of the golf course, obviously, there's a bridge out there. Is there any thought, or is there any possibility of considering a tunnel?
That's one of the things we are considering. When Cindy and I originally met, we looked at different ways, you know, there are ways where you can have the crosswalks, and you can have the markings, and you can have the, you know, the lights. We do like the look, you know, we do not have estimates on it yet, as far as the overpass type thing, or a tunnel. Generally, they're about the same. The tunnel might be a little bit less, but then you're using pumps to remove water and so forth. The bridge overall for that is probably somewhere around $400, $450,000. So we are, we definitely are evaluating. I agree with you, it would look great if we can do that, it would look better, tying the neighborhoods together, but it's also a real substantial cost, too, that we're evaluating.
I think our concern is safety, and just knowing that Tomlinson's going to carry a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, you have internal, but it's still going to carry a lot of it.
Other questions, comments? Okay, then let me ask one thing, Steve, did you agree to 10 o'clock, 10:00 p.m.?
Yes, we'll agree to that.
So Chuck and Steve, you guys were the movers in the seconds to that, is it okay to insert the 10:00 p.m. in the noise ordinance?
That's agreeable.
Yes.
Okay, and we will do that. With that, with that addition, clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljeric?
Yes.
Mark King?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
On to, the next two items actually are together, although we have to vote on them separately. So Resolution 19-124 is the fiscal plan for the ordinance of voluntary annexation. So Pam, so any questions we have, we'll address both of these if we need to address those, even though we'll vote separately. So let's go ahead and move on to the resolutions regarding annexation.
Thank you again, Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, I have a 100% voluntary annexation and associated fiscal plan for 17 and a half acres to be part of the Chatham Hills subdivision. For your reference, this is-
For your reference, this is directly related to what you just voted on previously, this seventeen and a half acres. Public hearing for this was held on October fourteenth, and it is eligible for your adoption consideration tonight. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's deal with resolution nineteen dash one twenty-four. Do I have a motion for that resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy Spolgeric. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to the next item, which is ordinance nineteen dash fifty-five, which is a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Joe Edwards makes motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Any questions or discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. On to ordinance nineteen dash fifty-eight, the North Point PUD Amendment Two, Project Whole Hardly, which we can now call Abbott. Shannon?
Thank you again. Good evening. For the record, Jonathan Dorsey with Community Development Department. For your adoption consideration tonight is the North Point Plan Unit Development Amendment Two, formerly known as Project Whole Hardly, now Abbott Labs. This project is located as was currently, eighteen twenty Bastion Court, on the north side of Bastion Court, south of two hundred and second street, and east of thirty-one. It's approximately twenty acres in size, and this project intends to amend the existing North Point Plan Unit Development, modify its architectural landscaping standards to allow the medical industrial building as proposed in the character exhibits of the proposed ordinance. Since last coming before you, the petitioner has made architectural improvements to the southern elevation of the building, and made small grammatical and formatting changes to the ordinance itself. This item is coming before you with a unanimous favorable recommendation at the previous Plan Commission. Petitioner and representative are here this evening. They do not plan on making a presentation, but are available for questions as are staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash fifty-eight?
Move to approve ordinance nineteen dash fifty-eight.
Motion by Bob Horkey. Is there a second?
Second.
My left ear is better than my right, so Jim Ake gets the second. With that, do I have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance nineteen dash fifty-nine, the Spring Mill Station southwest quadrant, southwest PUD Amendment One. Pam?
Thank you again. Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your consideration, we have an amendment to the Spring Mill Station Southwest Corner PUD District, which is located at the southwest corner of Spring Mill Road and one hundred and sixty-first street. The current version of this PUD was adopted in early two thousand and eighteen and includes the forty acres at that southwest corner. The proposed amendment applies only to the sixteen-acre apartment parcel, and modifies the architectural standards to fit the revised building design. The specific change is being requested due to a compliance issue found during the development plan process with an offset requirement for the building itself. The petitioner has met with the Spring Mill Station Task Group, and a letter of support has been included in the department report. The public hearing for this item was held at the November sixth Plan Commission meeting, and a unanimous favorable recommendation was sent to this body at that time. David George with Spring Mill Station Residential is here. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I if you have any of the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty-nine.
Motion by Cindy Spolgeric. Is there a second?
Second, then.
Second by Steve Hoover. Discussion or questions? Not directly related, but I'm gonna ask Birch quickly. Retention upon on Shamrock Springs, is that all moving along and everything?
Yeah, it's still part of the plan.
All right.
Yeah, we're in the final stages of designing some of the underground underwater building station to see if so architects. David George has the gross plan, uh, plan already done, so hopefully that'll be the first thing he does, take that along the road.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks. Clerk, please call the roll.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. And as it ends, old business, now we'll move on to new business. Resolution nineteen dash one thirty, a real property abatement for twenty-six twelve east one hundred and ninety-sixth street. Amanda?
There we go. Let's all pull back together here. All right. Good evening, President, members of the council. My name's Amanda Rovudou with the Economic Development Department. I'd like to present the next two items together, but they will need to be voted on separately. Gordon Food Service has filed a real and personal property abatement request for their investment at North Point Business Park, which includes a personal property investment of approximately seven point four million dollars in manufacturing and IT equipment, and a real property investment of eight, eighty-three point four million dollars for their fifty-one, five hundred and sixty-one thousand square foot facility that will be located on approximately eighty acres along one hundred and ninety-sixth street. Gordon Food Service is committed to adding four hundred jobs over the next five years with an average salary of fifty-one thousand per year. Bill Casey with Gordon Food Service is here this evening to answer any questions you may have, but is not making, planning on making a presentation this evening. The site is currently in a economic revitalization area, which was approved at your last council meeting, actually, kind of, meeting before that. Since the economic revitalization area has been established, council may consider and adopt the abatement resolution this evening. The request is for a ten-year real property abatement that would be structured at a hundred percent for the term of the abatement, and a personal property abatement which would be phased in incrementally each year at approximately seventeen percent per year. As a reminder, of the nature of these types of incentives, they are strictly performance-based, and are reviewed each year for compliance with the commitments that have been made to council. I'm available to answer any questions you may have at this time, as is, as is the Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. So, do I have a motion on resolution nineteen dash one thirty, the real property abatement?
So moved.
Moved by Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck Lehman, who is quicker? Any discussion? Questions? I just want to, oh, go ahead, Chuck.
Are the jobs creation, that's a total commitment. Is that incremental, or just a, just a?
The jobs will be phased in over the, over, over five years.
Proportionally, right?
Mm-hmm.
As we review it annually?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna make the comment, Amanda was very quick, for the audience, that all abatements are reviewed on an annual basis based upon performance that's been promised, and the council has in the past canceled abatements due to the lack of performance. So, these are always done on an annual basis, and, and are only good if they live up to the promise that is made to us. So, clerk, please call the roll.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to the resolution nineteen dash one thirty-one. This is the personal property abatement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Jim Ake. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Horkey. Questions? Discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Ake?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spolgeric?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next item is an item of introduction only. Ordinance nineteen dash sixty, Link's PUD.
Evening, council. For the record, Dan Crabtree with the Community Development Department. This item is the introduction of a proposed new PUD, known as the Link's PUD, which would encompass approximately sixty-eight acres of real estate on both the east and west sides of Tomlinson Road from one hundred and eighty-sixth street north to one hundred and ninety-first street. Property is currently zoned AGSF one, agriculture, single-family rural, and the PUD proposes that a majority of the real estate be rezoned to an underlying district of LB, local business, with a smaller area of GB, general business, underlying. A community entertainment center is proposed on the area set aside as GB underlying, while the Grand Universe Space Center is proposed on a portion of the real estate proposed to be LB underlying. A hotel and technology center are also uses shown on the concept plan. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the December second Plan Commission meeting. Birch Dalton of Edge Rock Development and Greg McCauley of Link Institute are present this evening to give a presentation to further explain this proposal. Thank you.
I'm Birch Dalton, three seven four four Slippery Rock Court, Westfield, Edge Rock.
I'm Greg McCauley, six two nine East Columbine Lane, Westfield.
You can go to the concept plan. So, what we're proposing essentially, and I actually brought my own little thing. There it is. This is the family entertainment center, which on this side is Jay Howard. If you recall, he already has a race business here in town. He wants to expand into indoor and outdoor go-karts. Then Peter Murphy from Carmel Laser Flash would like to come up in the middle section. And we left an area here called Music Movies and Meeting Space, and then we'll have a junk park here, similar to Urban Air or Skyzone. We got a lot of parks here, over four hundred parks, and you'll see in this concept plan, the first phase, we're, we're stopping the road here as Link needs time to raise their money and so forth, this, so this phase could go immediately upon zoning. Can you go and show the road cuts? I think this is important to show. A couple that we're showing here, you know, we're just suggesting a cut here, which would require going over the Monon to come into this lot. If anybody's been out there for baseball, this lot is the busiest lot that we have at Grand Park, and everybody has to come back out on one hundred and eighty-sixth street. So, we propose, you know, relieving that pressure. I've met with this neighbor here on the corner, and one of his biggest complaints is the problems coming out of the parking lot, and people kind of fighting to get back out. So, that's the suggestion. And as we move up, I have another cut here, which in this is planned to be ground set aside, yet to be negotiated, but this would be a park, public park, you know, based on biking and so forth as part of it. When you look at the topo here, we have a, a big drainage issue coming through here, Flood French, Flood Way. So, this eleven acres on this side kind of lends itself to, to be a very cool park. And then we save this corner which faces one hundred and ninety-first street, which would require a cut to get to this parcel. And then coming across, the most logical area for a cut is right here, and coming off one hundred and ninety-first street, far enough back, again, we, we, we need to spend more time with engineering, and then another cut here to enter the north parcel. We feel that this ground lends itself for this. Greg McCauley has worked hard, and has picked Westfield as the location. We feel coming off one hundred and ninety-first street, this, it's a great opportunity for Link, and it's also a great opportunity for the building that we propose, for the family entertainment and, and go-karts. If you go to elevations of the, of the buildings. We'll come back to him. I'll let Greg. Let me do mine first. So, what we have here is a precast, you know, forty-foot tall building. You'll see that we have very significant entryways, and the architects who are here tonight that can answer specific questions, cooler design, is that we have a, a colored green band along the whole base, and then you, you don't see it so well here, but we have embossed panels here, giving some additional breaks and character to the building. But if you look at the pagoda out at the five hundred, that was kind of the vision here for the entryway. So, you're gonna have major glass storefront. Do you have the night elevations along with this? So, when you look at this, I mean, it, it, it's a cool building. It's cost-effective, and what we strive to do here, we went from Shamrock Green in this property, working our way down all the way to Jay Howard's racing colors. And so, I think if there's any question architectural, you know, we're happy to, you know, to, to talk and work with you, but we felt that, you know, for the area that it's going into, you know, we have the trailer park to the south of us, thirty-one to the east of us, and then we've worked with Greg on his property to make sure our front facing him, you know, is, is architecturally significant and, and cool. So, is there any questions on the architecture or the use of what we want to do there, before I pass it on to Link?
Council, have any questions?
Hopefully, I can explain your side of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, it is my privilege to introduce Grand Universe, a world-class astronomical observatory, planetarium, and space science center. Do I have access to this here?
There you go. There you go.
Next slide, there you go. This is an overview of the Grand Park area, as Birch was discussing. On the east side of Grand Park, along the Monon is where we plan to put Observatory Park, and just across Tomlinson Road and south of one hundred and ninety-first street is a little over fifty acres is the planned site for Grand Universe. The Westfield Community Entertainment Center, you can see that portion on the southeast corner of that land. Next slide, please. This is a close-up view. This, we are, we will arrange the buildings and the parking area and the entrance and exits after more discussion with the Planning Commission. This is an exercise to show the possibilities of retention lake and the size of the Grand Universe building, and the, the size of the parking lots. We have right there about six hundred and fifty spots for parking based upon our anticipated annual attendance, and you can see Grand Park, the, the Ball Diamonds there to the left. So, we're just adjacent to Grand Park. Next slide, please. This is an architectural view of the front of the building. Total is one hundred and five thousand square feet. It includes a seventy-foot diameter digital planetarium, which will be the largest planetarium in the state of Indiana, fifty thousand square feet of exhibit areas, twenty-five thousand square feet STEM education center that will involve after-school programs, summer programs, a summer space camp, and adult education programs in conjunction with Westfield schools and local universities. Large STEM maker space areas for elementary and middle school students, the NASA Hubble Space Telescope Exhibit, the NASA Discovering New Worlds Exhibit, the NASA Artemis Mission to the Moon and Mars Exhibit, a very expansive solar system exhibit, and much, much more. Next slide. That's in coordination with our partnerships with NASA. This is a rear view. This is the Astronaut David Wolf Observatory. Astronaut David Wolf is our chief science officer for the Link Institute. It includes twin domes, which are the largest public observatories in the United States, both nighttime celestial and daytime solar telescopes. We anticipate that our open hours will be ten AM to ten PM, six days a week, and will have, will be observing the heavens both day and night with the use of and we'll have, we'll be observing the heavens both day and night with the use of both nighttime research-grade observatory telescopes and daytime hydrogen alpha telescopes. We also include the largest radio telescope in the United States dedicated specifically to STEM education, and that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and mission control rooms for high school STEM science programs. Next slide, please. Our projected outcomes: to help Westfield take a leadership role in STEM education in the state of Indiana, promote economic development in high-tech industries here in Westfield, help create Westfield's high-tech workforce, and help enhance Westfield tourism and economic growth. Grand Universe, bringing science to life, changing the world, and we're going to do it right here in Westfield. Thank you very much.
Are there questions? Comments?
That's pretty impressive.
What's your project timeline that you're hoping for here, realistically?
Realistically, we'd like to be open in thirty-six to forty-eight months. We're still going through our capital campaign. We anticipate eighteen to twenty-four months in construction time. But we certainly hope to be open by twenty twenty-four, which is NASA's planned next landing on the moon. If we can do that in conjunction with NASA's goals for the Artemis lunar program, that will certainly be, you know, a big boon to attendance at Grand Universe.
And I remember talking about four years ago at Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and you had this grand vision. And I do appreciate all the emails keeping us in the loop as we've gone forward. But I hope the community has some understanding of the impact this can have on Westfield. This would have as much, if not more, impact than Grand Park or anything else. This is an educational home run for this community once it's up and functioning. I really hope that you get there, and I'm sure that the community will give you all the help to a resident that we can possibly do.
Oh, thank you so much. And we have traveled to major space science centers throughout the United States, and they have all had a very dramatic impact in the cities in which they're located. We plan for this to be the number one school field trip destination in the state of Indiana, and that is certainly the case around the country with large world-class space science centers such as this. Timing, I believe in good timing. The timing couldn't be better because the next space race has begun.
Greg.
Sure.
Greg, thank you so much for, you know, all of your patience and enthusiasm. Thanks for bringing the Link Institute project to Westfield. I know we have spent a lot of time traversing the countryside looking for the ideal location. And just a special thanks to Birch and Edge Rock Development for their participation. What a great location. This is really exciting. I have to concur that this could be just another transformational project that's going to impact not just our city, not just the region, not just the state. I think it can literally have a national impact. You can share with us just a little bit, Greg, that you're already impacting a lot of students around the country, and your intention obviously is to do considerably more. But it's an outstanding project and really, really exciting for our community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for being a part of it and whatever we can do.
It's my privilege to do so. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Last item on new business, ordinance nineteen dash sixty-two. This is also a council introduction. Caleb.
Good evening, council. For the record, Caleb Bernus with the Community Development Department. The item presented for introduction is a second amendment to the Wheeler Landing Plan Unit Development District. The area in this amendment is approximately nine acres and is currently zoned the Wheeler Landing PUD district. The area is located at eight five one East one hundred and eighty-first Street, at the southwest corner of one hundred and eighty-first Street and Wheeler Road. The PUD amendment proposes amending the architectural standards for the west building elevation of the Westfield-Washington Schools naditorium. This amendment proposes modifying those architectural standards and substantial compliance with Exhibit B of the proposed PUD. Representatives of the project are here. They do not plan on making a presentation, but are available for questions, as am I, should you have any. Thank you.
Does council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, move it on to APC. Thank you. Do we have any cards?
We have no cards.
Thank you very much. City council comments?
Just, just real quickly before we get too deep, I'm just noticing the timeline on both ordinance nineteen sixty-two and nineteen sixty. Is there a... Is there a reason for the, obviously, a timeline on the Lynx project as opposed to the Wheeler project?
The Wheeler project was at the petitioner's request to be expedited schedule.
Okay.
And the Lynx is our standard zoning timeline for new PUD projects.
Good. Thank you.
Do I remember some kind of email traffic that January sixth is not going to be an APC recommendation, or my...
Correct. We have canceled the first Plan Commission meeting in January. So there will only be one Plan Commission meeting on the third Monday, which is actually Tuesday, I believe, because of a holiday.
So the Lynx item will be at that, that meeting later?
No, Lynx will have its public hearing at Plan Commission. Yeah, that's why it's on January twenty-first. So it is a little bit extended as opposed to our normal.
Okay, city council, do you have any comments?
I can give a report on last week's advisory Plan Commission we met on Wednesday evening due to the election. I believe that's the first time we've ever met on Wednesday for a APC meeting. And it was a relatively long meeting. We had consent agenda items which were approved for detailed development plans for Grand Junction Plaza, Westfield Veterinary Center, and Options Charter School. Our other items of business were the Chatham Hills PUD Amendment Seven, which we acted on earlier. That received a positive recommendation. The Clayburn Farms by Dell Webb PUD received a positive recommendation. The Dart Town Crossing PUD Amendment One, which we acted on earlier as well, received a positive recommendation. The Maple Knoll PUD Amendment Four, which involves the Meyer, received a negative recommendation because of architecture on thirty-one, or on thirty-two signage and outdoor storage, where I think the primary concerns with that. And the petitioner did not agree to rectify any of those items. They asked for a vote, and they got a negative recommendation. So I don't know for sure what direction that may take in the future, but that's where we left it at Plan Commission. We also acted on Grand Park Village PUD Amendment Three. That received a positive recommendation. Grand Park Village, Section Six, overall development plan and site plan was approved. We had public hearing items for the following items, Sanders Glen Development Plan and Site Plan, Chatham Hills, Section Seven, Development Plan and Site Plan. Actually, the Sanders Glen, I should have mentioned, was also approved. There was no public comment. It was a relatively simple thing, so that was approved. North Point PUD Amendment One for the Gordon Food Service received a positive recommendation after no one spoke at the public hearing. North Point PUD Amendment for the Abbott did have a public hearing, and that will come back to us at our next meeting. Westgate PUD Amendment. We had a public hearing. No one spoke at that. That will be up for additional. And let's see, we got one other item, Spring Mill Station, southwest corner, received a positive recommendation. We acted on that earlier this evening. We did have a second consent agenda item, which was also the Spring Mill Station southwest corner flats. The detailed development plan was approved. That was it. We were out of there by ten o'clock.
Do any other council members have comments? Mr. Mayor?
Was just communicating here with our guy that heads up all the plows out there, Travis Settish, keeps us all informed. And they're seriously salting everything as we speak. They'll be getting into the neighborhoods. It doesn't look like we're going to have to go to a expensive full push of snow in the neighborhoods and all, but he's running into the problem we always run into early in the season, and that's the high number of cars parked on the streets, especially the cul-de-sacs. We can't get those big trucks around there. So as the season goes on, please help these guys out, and don't park on the street if you have a choice. Westfield Welcome successfully held a, I believe it's sold out. Angela Smitherman, the mother-son, mother-son dance. Great. At Bridgewater Dinner Night. Very good. And next up on your agenda is the Westfield and Lights. Is that right? And that's when?
December seventh.
December seventh. Great. We'll look forward to that. Always a great evening. And lastly, thank you to all that attended the Grand Junction groundbreaking ceremony. Finally got that underway, and so a lot of changes in that downtown area that we've been working on so very many years. Thank you for all your cooperation.
Need a motion for adjournment?